Game time.
Yep.
Well, good evening, everybody. I'd like to welcome anybody out there watching to the Nevada Community School District Board of Education meeting, October 2nd, 2023. We have no additions to the agenda tonight, so I would like to call this meeting to order and get approval of the agenda as it was given to us on Friday.
Move to approve the agenda.
Second.
Motion to second approve the agenda as presented. On favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion approved. We have an agenda. Brian, has anybody reached out to the district for a public comment?
No, they haven't.
They have not. That brings us to the information portion of the meeting. Dr. Astmas?
Yeah.
Thank you for coming tonight.
You bet.
Good to see your dad Friday night, too.
Yeah, he was excited. He enjoyed going to the game. He was shocked at how many people were there.
We had a crowd.
Yeah.
We had a crowd.
Which is good to see.
Oh, winners tend to get followers.
Yeah, yeah. Oh, yeah, so I'm here tonight just to provide a quick update on our apprenticeship program. I think I might have talked about this in the spring of, I'm gonna say, 2022, just about kind of an update of where things were. So we still currently have two apprenticeship program opportunities for students. One is in the area of AGMEC and the other in welding. We've had a total of five students that have taken part in the apprenticeship program. Two were from other school districts, and then three of the students have been Nevada Community School District students that have taken part. We currently have one student who is completing an AGMEC apprenticeship at El Mako right now. He's gonna join us tonight, but just had some conflicts, so wasn't able to come. But I will have him come maybe at the end of the year, once his apprenticeship is near the end, just to kind of speak on the opportunity that he's had. We also have a grad, a class of 2023 graduate, who has completed the apprenticeship program with El Mako in welding in May, and then, or actually, excuse me, in August, and then they actually just hired him full-time. So that opportunity is all directly correlated to the opportunity he had while being a student at Nevada. We're still looking to expand our apprenticeship programs. A couple years ago when this started, it was very loose on being able to create them, and of course now it's kind of tightened down a little bit on that. So we were trying to get an HVAC apprenticeship set up, but that's a three-year program, so we ran into some roadblocks with that, but still trying to find creative ways to be able to provide those types of opportunities for students. So although our numbers aren't as high, of course, as we'd like, we are still providing that opportunities and trying to get as many students as possible interested in that route. We have three students currently in the welding program at DMAC that would be eligible to be up for an apprenticeship next year in that area, so we'll be reaching out to them, and hopefully, one, if not more, will take advantage.
I guess this is the part where you have any questions for Dr. Astmas?
Any idea of approximately what percentage of students that participate in one of our apprenticeships actually end up pursuing employment in that area when they're?
Yeah, so of our four completers, two of the four continued on that path, and actually were employed directly with El Mako. One of them is our grad from 2023, and another was a student at Ames High School. So we're 50% right now, which is great to see. The other two, I think one of them explored or had an athletic opportunity that they pursued in college, and then the other one just went completely a different field. I'm pretty confident that the individual who's in our program right now will continue in that area, in that field, hopefully with El Mako. He's got some, he's kind of have his path right in line and has a clear vision, and this would fall right in line with that, so.
So is that percentage pretty representative of past years, too? Just kind of?
Yeah, 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 I would say so. The one thing that we're seeing, the time commitment is a little bit tricky during the school year, just with activities and different things that students have. So they have to, in the summer, students have to work a total of 40 hours per week, and then in the fall and the winter and the spring, that number drops down to 20. There isn't a requirement on like number of hours during the school day. It can be one period if needed. But yeah, we're just running into some issues with before-school, after-school opportunities for the students. So hopefully, we can make things a little bit more flexible. Weekends are a huge time, but some of the businesses aren't open. So that gets a little bit tricky. And then the age requirement also. Some businesses are just flat at 18 for insurance purposes. Others that are at 16 are just, are a little bit looser. But then, of course, the insurance is just a little bit different for those students, and some of the families aren't wanting to jump into that. Pay is also another thing. The businesses are doing a great job getting the max that we can get for our students, but I have heard from students and families that have turned it down, that they have higher opportunities wage-wise available to them. Still trying to sell, well, you know, you're also getting a high school credit. You also have the flexibility to work during your school day, and then also have the opportunity to get DMAC credits as well. Students can get up to six credits per year, three per semester, by taking part in this with an independent internship study through DMAC. But of course, if they're not going that route, it's not as big of a sell to them. So just trying to kind of find, you know, the individual attraction for each student as possible.
Student wanting to do this is gonna come see you?
Say it again, sorry.
If a student wants to do this.
Yeah.
Say they're at home watching us right now, which I would be surprised. Would they, are you the point of contact?
Yeah, myself or Dr. Einzweiler, Mr. Smith at the high school. There's a whole session that they have specifically with me during registration in February. Just get kind of a little snippet, able to speak on apprenticeships, internships, and those opportunities. I think it's kind of common knowledge, I'll maybe check with the high school students here about those opportunities, and might not be specific to the apprenticeship side, but hopefully the internship side. I'd say there's a high percentage of students that take advantage of that, specifically juniors and seniors, probably 30-ish percent, I would guess.
Any questions for Dr. Astmas?
Do you, are you, you're not business internship, though, right? Are you in a business internship?
Right now, but fourth quarter, I will have one with Mr. Einzweiler. It's just to do like some of the digital media stuff for the seniors and things.
Yep. So if you walk into the high school, directly to the left, they have like the senior wall. Yeah, should be working on that as her internship. Do you have a desire to explore an area?
Uh, I do, yeah. I do like working with that stuff, but I kind of have my mind more set like after college to environment of science field.
Okay.
Then I do have like a, like interest, like a hobby.
Yeah.
Yeah, I have one that starts in two weeks, so at the end of the quarter.
For term two?
Yeah.
What in?
I haven't decided yet, but it could be in like the catering side of things, events, yeah.
Yeah. So the reason I ask is like, we can get creative with creating apprenticeships. So before, we would just kind of create the apprenticeship and then hope kids would fall into it. Well, now we're trying to find internships that kids have, and then create the apprenticeship off of that. So that's the only reason, yeah, that I ask. And I have a list of them that we have each term, and it just, it's just getting a little tricky because they're very open-ended or very like specific to like one special area. So we're still, we're still working, working through it. Again, but honestly, the pay is one of the biggest kickbacks that we're, that we're struggling with, and we don't have control over that.
Nope, that's not the district's responsibility.
But we'll continue to provide the opportunities for students.
Well, those are some good questions. Any, Anne, Anne, you probably know about this anyway, so. Doctor, I appreciate your time tonight.
Yeah, absolutely. We'll have, we'll have, can get both of them to come in, the one that's currently working in, and also the one that's still a student of ours in the spring, maybe speak a little bit more about their personal experience than relaying.
Sounds like you can get some real-time updates here. All right, thank you.
Thanks.
Brian, 4.2, our certified annual report.
Yeah, the certified annual financial report for the fiscal year ending June 30th, 2023, was filed on September 14th deadline. The deadline was that following Friday. I noted in there that for fiscal year 2020, 2023, the revenues exceeded the expenditures by $48,000. I didn't say which fund, that was general fund. So basically, $48,000, just about breakeven on revenues and expenditures for last year. Solvency ratio increased 13.64%, 15.67%. As you can see, the, the increase wasn't because of fund balance. Most of the, most of the increase in solvency ratios, because I tried to pay down the funds, like the categorical funds, tried to pay them down as much as I could. So those balances are low. In turn, it increased the balance of the, of the, of the unexpendant fund balance. I provided income statements, balance sheets for, for the information that was in the CAR. They didn't, they didn't print off real nice because they were Excel spreadsheets. So there's some kind of small, if you want me to hand provide a bigger, bigger report on that. And also, I included the nutrition fund. It's been probably a year or two since you've seen any financial statements from the nutrition fund, so they're, I'm gonna update nutrition fund financial statements for that this year.
It is good to see a nutritional fund that had been long a concern. Actually threw off, what, over $14,000 of interest? Right, that was right there. $14,274.59 of interest generated. I doubt that anyone would be able to answer. Doctor, you probably wouldn't be either, but you know, their sales looks like they are selling the lunches, and I guess that speaks to the quality of the food. Anybody want to swing at that? You guys, do you eat school lunches?
Typically, no.
Okay.
I don't, you better.
Well, we tried. Nonetheless, that's good, and anybody else see anything? I would have to say it's nice to see us on a positive side of revenues versus expenses.
Top two items, top two items on the, on the balance sheet, two assets, cash and bank, and then the ice chip nutritional fund. Those are the cash items. Now, fiscal year 22, the cash was higher. Fiscal year 23, the, the ice chip was higher. It's because I'm getting 5% right now on the ice chip fund and only 1% on the bank account. Bank account is the cash today.
So in years past, doctor, you had said that you were trying to get your solvency pot down to a lower level, more along the lines of what the IASBA was recommending. Is there anything that you're gonna do different since we popped back up?
No, not really. It's at a reasonable level.
Yeah.
My, my discussion over the years has been, was more in reference to the unspent balance percentage that's all unsaid, but steady, in a good place.
And I looked at those categorical balances for the fiscal year 23, and, and noted that there was a couple of them there that aren't being spent down, and next board meeting we'll bring to your proposal list to look those into a flex fund where they can be spent on other things.
That was a welcome change in the law, to be able to co-mingle funds.
Yes.
I think we'll be talking about that in the next meeting, too.
Yep.
Not good. Anybody have any questions for Brian? Well, I guess we can talk about the convention then, 4.3.
If anyone, if you, anyone decides you're interested in attending the convention this year, just let me know, and I will.
Are they welcome?
Sure.
I'll tell you what, it is an excused absence, and you will be entertained and educated and well-fed. It's a good day. We're special district as we, we're one of the forefront of bringing students to the board, and now we're fortunate enough to have two. And I tell you what, it's something to behold because you are seen as a peer in a group from across the state, that you have the opportunity to do breakout meetings on topics that may interest you. The performances that are done by high schools in their performing arts is something to behold. It's one of those things that you, I would gladly pay to go see, you know, knowing how well they perform. You know, Tom, you've seen a lot of them.
Yeah, I was sorry, they've been impressive. Does the district get a copy of the program?
Yeah, I will send that to you. I was gonna put it in the board packet.
Send it to the student.
Yeah, I'll send it to every, I'll send it.
Didn't we get a printed copy sent to your home, to your house?
But I was just wondering if the district had one.
I'll, I'll send that to you. I meant, I was gonna put it in the board packet, it just didn't.
That's fine, we got time.
We don't need it, but I was, the student members would be maybe interested in seeing some of the, the breakout sessions, like Marty said, that are available to go to and see the, kind of the variety of things that are.
And there's a lot.
Provided, yeah.
Yep. So if we're back, Tom, you gotta go. You gotta go.
Am I gonna go?
Last year, didn't you?
I did, and for the same reason, the issue, I might not be here either. So we'll have to see what that peak looks like. If I'm here, I will, yes.
That's, I would say the same. If I'm here, I will.
I already know I can't.
Yeah, that's.
I'll give everybody another reminder as we get closer. I just wanted to throw it out there, so.
Okay. All right, we will revisit that. It brings us to our action agenda tonight, 5.1. We have a wrestling agreement that has been brought to the district, and Dr. Gray, would you like to speak to that?
Um, yeah, they have very low numbers at Collins-Maxwell, so they reached out to us for boys wrestling and asked if their participants could join our team this year. Our activity director and our head coach are both in favor of that. Doesn't appear that that will bump us up in class. But if, if that changed, and it would bump us up in class, Collins-Maxwell would understand that we
Yep.
we would end that arrangement. We did that a few years ago. We used to take Colonesco's boys for wrestling, and then then it started, it was gonna bump us up, and that's when we stopped doing that. But it doesn't appear that Collins-Maxwell will bump us up at this time.
I think we're fairly close to that cutoff.
We are pretty close. We'll be the largest 2A in that, in wrestling, but Dustin feels like there's still a pretty good cushion there between us and the next, so.
Did I hear correctly? We were looking at a lady wrestler coming to us? Friday night? Transfer him?
Um, yes, we did have a student join us from Locky.
Locky, yeah.
Yep, she's attending at our high school.
Anybody else got anything? Joe, you look like you're chewing on something.
No.
Good. All right. Since it is an action item.
Move approval of the sharing agreement with Collins-Maxwell for boys wrestling for the 2023-24 school year.
Second.
Motion to second approve the wrestling agreement as proposed to the district from Collins-Maxwell for the 23-24 school year. Any questions? Bring none on favor.
Aye.
Opposed? We have an agreement, doctor. 5.2, approval request, request of the allowable growth and supplemental aid for our annual special ed negative balance.
Yeah, on pages 15 through 17, I provided you with the balance report right directly from the special ed report, and it shows the revenues and expenditures. And when you get to the bottom line, the difference, well, it's in three levels, and the difference between the revenues and the expenditures is broken out at the bottom. And the total deficit is 523,897 for the special ed program. We're requesting that you be allowed to request allowable growth supplemental aid for that balance.
And that's payable when?
It'll be fiscal year 2024, 2025.
Yep.
How does that, that negative balance compare to previous years?
It's been steadily, I mean, well, steadily, basically on the decrease, meaning the negative balance has been getting larger every year.
Is there anything as a school you could do to ask the state to do legislatively to appropriate dollars to kind of take the edges off that?
Over the 25-plus years that I've been here, the weightings have not changed at all.
So what do you say? That's an answer to my question, or I get that one?
Well, the weighting, like for, for level one is 1.72.
Right.
So if you have the supplemental aid balance per student, we get another 0.72, about about.
Yeah.
And those, those balances have not changed in several years.
You believe they should be allowed to rise?
Yep.
Doctor?
Yeah, I would agree. They've been that way for as long as I've been in this, so.
Oh, they did, they've not been allowed to age, or?
Yeah, this is a common issue for most districts. And I think, in all the time I've been at Nevada, I can, I think there's maybe only been one year that we didn't have this.
A negative balance.
Yeah.
Okay.
And we shake out, we shake out RBE, IDA funds and Medicaid, too.
We have hustled after those.
Yeah.
We've done a good job. The office, business office has done historically a good chase those dollars.
Yeah. $265,000 in Medicaid alone, which we chased, yeah.
Yeah, that's not given to us. You've got to go out and work for that.
Yep.
Now, that's kudos there, because, you know, you start talking to the people that are both here now and have been, and there's a lot of phone calls and a lot of paperwork looking for which closes the gap, but you know, again, there's a gap.
Yeah.
Okay. Any other questions or concerns? It's an action item.
I move approval of the request for allowable growth and supplemental aid for negative special education balance from fiscal year 2023.
Second.
Motion to second to approve the request for allowable growth and supplemental aid for our negative special education balance for this fiscal year 23. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? 5.3, we're renewing our 2080 with Woodward, Grandwood, and Woodward Granger, the district itself?
Yeah, they're under the umbrella of Woodward, Grandwood, and Woodward Academy.
Okay.
We've had longstanding agreements with them, which allow some of our students, when needed, to access their programming. It's typically either behavioral or special education and or of Woodward, but I don't know. We have maybe one student, let's call, do you remember Matt, where? At Woodward or at Grandwood? Uh, we have a few more. We had a couple come back. At Woodward and at Grandwood, we have total five. Twenty-two. Yeah. It's just pretty standard for us to have anywhere from, yeah, one or two to four or five at a time.
Are there any other, are there any options other than Woodward Academy and Grandwood?
Not a lot.
No.
Not a lot. It's, it's an area of need for all districts.
What would be the other potential options if, if Woodward weren't an option?
Good question. Has there, there's been much out there? I mean, other parts of the state may have, you know, programming of this type in somewhere, but around here, there wouldn't really be any options.
I think that means that Woodward serves a lot of districts.
They do, yeah. They serve most of central Iowa. Those seats can be tough to get sometimes. Sometimes we have a waiting list that we'll put students on to get in.
What happens to our district students that would otherwise be able to go there if, but there wasn't a space available? What happens to that student?
We, we would take other measures here in the district to try to meet the students' needs until a seat opens up for them.
Right.
That would be a strain, that would be source-wise, I'm guessing.
It does. It could mean, could mean another one-on-one associate. It could be structuring their day a little bit different.
Brian, is there not a time that we were tasked to be considered as a host site for some of this, thinking back years ago?
I think when Mr. Walker was here, they were considering maybe doing a level-three program over Kilt Country, and then didn't proceed.
Well, we've all been on the board a while, and we've all approved this. The time's passed, so this is nothing new. So this is our 23-24, 2080 renewal. Take a motion.
Motion to approve continuing the 2080 agreement for student services at Grandwood and Woodward Academy.
Motion to second to renew our 2080 agreement with the Woodward-Granger School District for their Grantwood and Woodward Academy programs. Any further questions? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? There you go, doctor. Consent agenda. Brian, I had a question for you. I thought, I still didn't mark it on my tape. Involve tape, athletic tape, how you attributed it. I thought there was just one of those. It's on either page 23 or 24. Oh, yeah. A third of the way up, it's school health athletic tape. Almost 1,400. I thought that was just one of those designations I thought, athletic tape, school health.
Yeah, there's probably.
Oh, I just was amused by the, you know, you're, you're just accounting for it, and that's where it went, and that's funny.
It's pretty pricey for athletic tape.
Yeah. But we have the kind of success that I don't begrudge the expense, and hope that nobody's trying to limit. If there's a need, an athlete's got a need, then by all means, spend the money, use the tape. No, it was, okay, this is, I usually don't look at these that closely, but the second item from Ali's Pizza was for the FFA Pizza pumpkin hearts. was for the F F A pizza pumpkin hearts. Pumpkin harvesting. So I guess if you pick pumpkins, you buy your pizza. Way to go, Coop. Since we have a forensic engineer's analysis for the weight room, we're pretty much good on fixing the floor, buying something reflecting twenty-first century padding and we can still lift, our athletes continue to lift their heavyweights.
Yep.
Good.
Got that, uh, all in motion, so.
Excellent. I am glad that it did not come down to the fact that we had done damage to that decking. Cause just now, when you're starting to see real daylight under your wrestling program, to say, wait a minute, you're moving. Anybody else got anything? It's not very sexy, but it's what we approve. I mean, people come to us because we go, a consent agenda is a big catch-all. And a lot of the things, as you can see, go into it. And so we are ultimately responsible for the dollars being spent. Something flies off the rails, we are the ones legally on the hook for saying, you said it was good.
See, we have a bus driver. Are we in need of drivers then?
Um, we do have a couple of sub-drivers. So we'll, um, he'll be utilizing those, um, but we, we should be fine.
Are we coming on disposal of our older buses? Seems like we're, our collection on the north side of the building there is getting a little bit.
I don't think we received anything, have we? Last I talked to Jason.
We received one bid from a little person and then another bid from a person down by Melbourne, so we got rid of two of them.
Oh, we did get the bids then, okay. I, he, he knew there were some potential, uh, bidders, but I hadn't received anything last I talked to him. Good.
Yes.
Is there a... The doors tend to be open for those buses, is there a reason why?
I see that too.
The doors on the, one door is getting rid of.
Well, the ones that are parked on the north side of the building, that look like we don't use anymore quite often. It's not always those doors are open, so. Kinda looks like an attractive nuisance, especially right next to Park there.
Right. Raccoons. And don't think they can do a lot of damage real quick, now, you know? Is that, what is that? Commercial with a guy named Ronnie has got a new dog named Rocco, which is a raccoon. Come on, it's about drilling, you're not supposed to.
Tell a lot of commercials.
I'm looking for a wingman here, doesn't anybody else listen to these? No, thanks, great.
Crickets, Marty, I don't know.
Well, all right, service, my board member comment, thanks.
Try not to at least.
Yes, fine, if we got anybody see anything in the consent agenda, they wish to bring out, discuss, and if not, please make a motion. Moving on.
Move to approve the consent agenda?
Second.
Motion to second to approve the consent agenda that's placed before us tonight, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Seven point one, board member comments.
Um, homecoming went well. I think we're all glad that it's over, but it was fun, uh, yeah.
Um, I know everyone really enjoyed doing kickball at score. Um, there weren't as many problems this year. Uh, Mr. Struck kinda laid down a lot more ground rules and everyone kinda came to an agreement on those. And then, um, both powder popper, football and volleyball seemed to run rather smoothly, so, yeah.
Got weather was with us, they won the football game. What else do you need? Anybody else like?
No, just a, another action packed and really looked like a, a fun week for the community, you know? All the homecoming stuff and it was, I'm amazed at the energy, uh, people in our community have to, to keep doing this. It almost seems like week after week, we've got something going on and we just knock it out of the park every time, so. Kudos to everyone, including, you know, all the students that worked hard on homecoming and all the activities that, that surrounded it and made it something special for the whole community. And, boy, the attendance at the, at the football game, you know, kind of a test to that, you know, how, how, uh, how it affects, you know, the whole community pride and, and the excitement, so, very good. I used to be able to sit by myself in the bleachers at a football game an, an hour before kickoff and, uh, and this time I get there an hour before kickoff and, and the entire front, top row is already taken and reserved and, so.
Should watch a game setting up in the press box. You really should do yourself, you know, just a solid there.
I've never done that for a high school game. I did it for some of the P E week.
No, I have not watched a football game up there yet. I should.
This weekend should be another big game.
Who we got?
Harlan.
Boon just hates us.
Well, at least it's here.
Oh, that's, oh, yeah.
They lost one game, got to a district opponent to crest.
Well, somebody else we don't wanna play.
No, it's there next week.
God, I, I looked at the schedule, it's just like, what did we do to deserve that?
Friday night is senior night?
Already, can't believe it.
I know. Can't believe it's October. I mean, we just, you know, this is the best time of the year in the state, I think, it's just beautiful.
It's supposed to be fifty-six for a high on Friday, though, it's crazy.
Well, it's not supposed to be, fifty-six is more normal than ninety-two.
But I mean, it's a thirty-degree swing in three days.
It's Iowa, why does anybody, it shouldn't surprise anybody. We're that stage that gets the kinda weather that keeps us talking about it. Anything else? Everybody check their calendar, our next meeting is gonna be on the sixteenth here. Leanne, thank you for your contribution to the meeting tonight. Okay, I'd like to thank everybody for coming. I would seek a motion for adjournment.
Second.
Motion to second to adjourn, all in favor?